For City Council, please rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Silence for someone?
I don't know if any of you heard that.
Probably better say it again, I don't think they heard you. Bye, Cody.
Alrighty, so we'll get into this again. This meeting has been brought to our attention again, our normal meeting.
Sharon, Barney.
Twice a month here.
Join the meeting.
Try to get this temporary location figured out. We've been running into multiple roadblocks on all different temporary locations. I know a lot of people are here wanting to express their concerns, and there is some huge concerns in some of these areas where individuals are ending up at. And it was one of my huge concerns from the get-go that if we didn't set something up right away, that we were going to have some issues. And that's where we're at. So anyways, I'd like to start off going back to why we're doing this. Originally, what the whole thing starts off with is there's the Boise decision. I think a lot of you are familiar with. If we do not have a place for the homeless to go, then we cannot kick them out of their locations. They're at any government, any basically city location, public place, basically, as we would say. They want to stay there, we have to have a place for them to go. And that's what we're working on right now, is for a place to go. Bringing some people up to speed. We do have a permanent location that we've been working on. Ran into some roadblocks on that. The permanent location is the bottom of foothill. It's going to be next to the Beacon of Hope Shelter. So hopefully, we can basically tag-team and help out each other on that situation on the homeless, where the Beacon of Hope will be able to have an overnight shelter. And that will basically is going to be our property, is be used as an urban campsite. The other locations we've looked at in the past, one is at the City Yard. We ran into some legal issues on the City Yard due to water, possible contamination, can't risk that. The other place was Deer Creek, was another place we looked at. Didn't really want it to go there because there's too much fire hazard and the ingress and regress areas are too dangerous for people to get in and out of. If there was something that broke loose there. Another location we looked at was off Oberlin Road. Oberlin Road, Greenway Project. And it had restrictions on that because of fire hazard too and basically safety and welfare of our city. Basically, we have at the top there, we have repeater towers and towers that could interfere with emergency situations. So that one basically got shot down. We've looked into another city location that we will probably talk about. In the Mill Street and East Greenhorn. City owns there, that property there. So we're probably, I'm sure we'll be discussing that a little bit. Other places we looked at were where they were at, which was at next to COS. That was another location, but that's also was not a really good location just for the fact is there's high fire hazard there. And we don't really want it too close to COS, Behavior Health and all that stuff. Because it could be just bad for the community. And like I said, it was a major fire hazard. We've had two major fires that occurred up there by COS in the past five years, I think it was. That though, we just recently, thanks to our Chief Lemus, Warricka Fire, he went up there and with the crew and cleaned up a lot of that area. And so it's less of a fire hazard now, which is really awesome. But there again, that's not the, an ideal location for, because of the demographics of it. There've been, a lot of homeless activity's been happening at Lower Greenhorn Park, which obviously, we don't want that to keep reoccurring either because we want our families to be able to go enjoy it and go up there and have a good time like we have the park's forests to put everybody to enjoy it. Right now, there's approximately, we have like two, one or two motorhomes, the Trader, and three tents up in Lower Greenhorn right there. And over Behavior Health, next to COS, I think we have what's upwards of six, I think, up there now. Maybe a little bit more, I think, depending on how many people you count. There's a little few more individuals there than that. Oberlin Road, off the Greenway, we probably have like five camps now there. Is that up in town? Five or six there. And scattered along Greenway, there's numerous camps up and down the Greenway there. Deer Creek has been the biggest one that's got hit hard since we've had all this thing. Deer Creek area, there's probably enough food, probably ten camps there now. Pretty intense.
There's two motorhomes and a fifth wheel.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, it's getting pretty good. And there's that along the creek itself, there's quite a few camps now that have been popping up. Either now too. Part of the reason why these camps have been popping up, we had two situations over there behind, next to Behavior Hill, next to COS, across from COS there. The city property that's there, we did some fire mitigation there. So we cleared that out, it's a combination of reasons why we did that. We cleared that out for fire danger, obviously, first and foremost, it was a high fire danger. Secondly, Caltrans is going to be using that for a staging area here this next year when they start working on Main Street. So that was one of the big reasons why we had to clear that out. The other area that got cleared out, that kind of moved a lot of the individuals around, was below the dam, right there. Pacific Power, excuse me, Pacific Power owns that little stretch of property right through there. So for safety reasons of, that's our substation, so for power. So we had to, they wanted to fence that off and get that cleared out of there for, you know, obviously for our power situation, the safety of the citizens. So that got cleared out. Well, that area was housing quite a few homeless individuals and that's why we're facing so many of them rotating around in different areas. And this was our big concern, why we're pushing from the get-go to try to come up with a location so we wouldn't be faced with the situation that we are in right now, where they are ended up in areas that are not the best suitable for where they're at. So that's where we're at on this situation. I don't know if any of the council wants to add anymore to what I've discussed.
You think you covered it?
Yes, Mrs. McQuaid.
We actually, you put two sites, we actually had three sites. We had one over in between Lenox and...
Correct, I didn't tell.
Wasn't that the third site?
Yes, we did, I'm sorry, yeah, I did miss that one. Over there off Lenox Street, on the, it'd be on the west side of the freeway. We did look at a site over there too. And because of the close proximity to housing and residential zone, it made it a very hard situation to be able to open that up too. Did I miss any other spots?
No, I think that's only the one.
So as you can hear, we've actually, we're looking at a lot of different, a lot of different sites. We do have, as a city, we do own other properties. A lot of these other properties are obviously not ideal. And the reason why is some of these properties are too far out of town area. If you move these individuals to an area that's basically an inconvenience for them in the sense that they can't get to their services, then we can get sued as a city also, not just by moving them around, but by taking and moving them to an area where they can't get to their services and stuff. So that was another reason why we have been looking at closer areas.
Is Mill Creek off the table, or is that something we're going to discuss today?
I think we're still going to have a discussion.
Okay, so that's our one of our, like a fourth site, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was one we did briefly discuss before. It's like I said, there's the old Mill Site there. So we got the Mill Site, we got up by, actually, Accino, is that what you're referring to?
Okay.
So that was another one we're looking at also. And the old, the old Mill, as in Timothy's old Mill too, which is now under new ownership also. Okay, so with that in mind, does council have any direction we want to first start off with? We want to discuss some of these sites? And do you have staff that wants to give a report on this?
We have public comments at first. According to the...
It says speakers, and I think we might have a few.
That's just a holding.
Can you... Interstate City Manager Johnson, can you explain to me the difference between speakers and public comments as far as Rosenberg rules a word ago?
Speakers would be somebody scheduled that you knew was coming in. They're making a presentation to you. Public comments is the public having their time to sit.
Judy, join the meeting.
Have any, we didn't have any speakers.
All public comments, yes. As I was going to say, I didn't have any.
We have nobody that has contacted us to speak.
Okay, so we basically have right off to this point. So at this point, we, does the council want to discuss some stuff first? Because it's up to us, we want to, Ray, just discuss some sites first and then bring the public into their comments, because I'm sure we have lots of public comments.
I'd love to hear from the public.
I would love that too.
And then we will open this up for public comments. Yes, please come to the podium, please. And if you would, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Robin Dockburn, and I live at 1060 Deer Creek. We have people in there that are convalescent. And it's a fire hazard because we're at the dead end street. They are at the entrance and egress of Deer Creek. They have fires down there every night, every day. If they start a fire, I just wondered, do you have an evacuation plan to get all them people who are convalescent out of those apartments, out of those streets?
So on that regards, I think that, I don't know, we'll kind of do a few of these questions and then we'll bring them up. I'd like to have a series of questions. So that one, I think, would be more or less geared towards Chief Lemus, if you wouldn't mind later on speaking about that, yes, so.
That's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I know there's more public comments, so go ahead and get up there. Don't be shy.
Good evening, members of the council. Now, my name's Trias, I'm a Warricka resident. And the homeless situation has become very, very desperate and I am very concerned about that. And I'm sure the council is in us, so as many other Warricka residents. And so I'm glad that several sites have been identified as a potential site for the homeless temporary homeless campsite. However, in my opinion, there's no such thing as an ideal location. So I hope the council will make a proposition on a site and get the site going because, just like I said, I noticed that the homeless situation has become very spread in this city. And so the question is, when is the council expected to make a final decision on the temporary campsite? And will structures or tents temporarily be erected before the cold season arrives?
Will be when, I'm sorry?
Before the cold season arrives. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
When, when will the final decision be made before the cold season arrives?
Lorenza Lowes, Fourth Street. You're blowing off Lower Greenhorn Park as a location, is that the bae? I mean, you're running out places. You got any place better than Lower Greenhorn Park?
That's what we're working on, yeah, thank you. Yeah, putting it on.
I live at the manufactured home community in Deer Creek.
Your name, your name?
My name is Jan Darrell. And we have, our isolation is a problem when it comes to the homeless. Our isolation is a blessing when they're not there. Because we have a really, the place that they've chosen to camp is a public use area with picnic tables and access to the creek. We have pets that usually used to walk down there. A lot of the senior citizens use that as an exercise area because it's close to their home. They seem to be moving closer to the residences up there with their fifth wheels, motorhomes. They're moving in that direction. And my feeling is they're doing it because they're close to the, what, one or two toilets are up there. Nobody else really cares. But because of their proximity to our area, they are now making drive-throughs to Crystal Glen, they're coming up, going back home. It takes place all kinds of times in the day. And I realize that's not illegal, but it is unusual for our area. And it's just concerning because common sense says, somebody's trying to find out how many cars are where, who's home, when they're home, when they're gone. I don't know that that's true, but it's definitely a concern. People have had things stolen from their properties, front of their properties. I don't know that it was them, but I'm saying that that's happened. And they are very loud partiers in the middle of the night. People, some people in Crystal Glen can hear them until two or three in the morning, yelling and shouting and singing. One of the, one of the homeless came up to one of the residents in Crystal Glen and knocked on their door at four in the morning, asking if she could stay there. She needed a place to stay. Again, you know, you have petitions in front of you that I circulated and Robin circulated to show that it's not just two or three people who are concerned. We are all very concerned. Some people are extremely frightened. I went to get the petition signed to one of our residences of a woman who has a lot of disabilities. She had her screen door closed, but her door open. And when I knocked, she says, "Come on in, I'm in the back of the house." I said, "Don't do that, you're in Florida, you know, alarm system or something." You can't do that, we don't know when any of this is going to build up tomorrow. They have had a couple of altercations with a truck driver who parks his truck down the road, which is close to their vehicles. But he will say things to them, like, "You need to get out of the road, you know, for your safety, you need to stop being in the road." And they're in the road all the time. And in dark clothing, it's hard to see them, there's no streetlights out there. Anyway, our safety is definitely number one. And I am not disrespectful to the homeless, you know. I know that there are homeless people of their own choosing, and I know there's homeless people who don't have a choice. But they do need to be in a place that does not put what they want to do above the rights of the people who had access to the area they took over. And you know, I feel very violated by that. And I heard at one point, you're mentioning, you're mentioning things that, I don't know exactly where they are, but I heard at one point that past Starbucks, that used to be a Mill Site.
Join the meeting.
That one that you talked about?
Which one?
The one along Starbucks on Fort Jones Road.
Yeah, that's actually one of them we have discussed, that's probably the only one we discussed.
Okay, and it's in close proximity to Walmart, and really isn't, they can get what they need. And I think that's important right now, they're close to Grocery Outlet. Grocery Outlet says they are hanging around there all the time. You know, that's, it's a concern. I mean, you don't really know what else to say except we value, we pay for the right to do. And that, that place where they have made their encampment is probably one of the most beautiful campsites that anyone could imagine. I can't go camping in a Ford site that looks like that. I mean, it's gorgeous down there, but it's lost to us. And appreciate whatever you can do. And I'm also wondering, when you do make a decision and you get the go-ahead, I know that I am totally willing to come and help clear the area, pull the weeds, spray the bushes, whatever. I mean, I want to be proactive in this. I don't want to just stand back and point my fingers and say, "You guys solve it." I know you're trying your best, I do know that. But time is really important. The dry condition of our area is really important. And we would all be trapped. We would not be able to get out of there unless we hike up to the freeway. And we have people who can't do that. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
My name's Denise Weston, and I just moved to the area on Deer Creek in June a year ago. And I used to walk my dog down there on the creek, beautiful. So this is a bit of a reiteration, now I can't. I won't. It wasn't, it was six months after we moved there. I guess it's a brother and sister that have their tents right, they moved in. I don't know if it was a company or not, but before I knew it, I saw bicycle tires all over the place, trash, with just odds and ends. And it wasn't as enjoyable. Now you're left there. The last walk I did was maybe before the major crowd came in. I guess there were a couple people. And just garbage bags along the walk, just laying there, you know. And it just, I don't go down there anymore. I was bitten by a dog, the girl's dog that first moved in there. And so I called the police and they took it to the animal control and checked out for rabies and all that. Now, you see several dogs out there without leashes and it's just, it's unsafe. And it's unfortunate, I'm retired, I enjoyed it, now I can't. And so I would like an ETA as far as finding another situation. And like Jan, I would help. You know, I'll do anything I can to help. But I'm no way going down there to pick up trash alone for this and that. Can we get somebody in there once a day or once a week to pick up the trash? Because even driving by, I don't like looking at the trash bags on the street. Today, driving by, there were a couple piles of broken glass on the street, I noticed. I never noticed them before, but it's getting bad and it's going to get worse. So I would like to know a time when we might be able to solve the situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Asa Bennett, I'm a Warricka resident. Earlier today, we on a day spa across from the Siskiyou County Library. Today, Raisin Transin decided that he was going to walk into the spa, walk through the waiting room, into the private hallway, through closed doors, and opened up my wife's treatment room as she was treating a client to see if he could use the bathroom. This is kind of more of a localized issue that we've been having for years, which is the Siskiyou County Library seems to be accommodating to a certain amount of either homeless or trans in or whatever. You know, the encampments are one thing, they're in bad locations and whatnot, but I don't feel like the Siskiyou County, the library, needs to be an epicenter for, you know, a dozen or more regulars that hang out there during the day, sleep on the stairways, sleep in the landscape recession around the building. You know, we witnessed constant little exchanges of drugs for money, whatever, around there on the daily. You know, we've been in contact with YPD as much as possible over the last few years or longer than that. And, you know, wondering if there's anything that the city can do, working with the police department to disperse those individuals hanging around there on the daily, conducting some of their less than scrupulous business. And to avoid that, because it's just about to the point where, you know, the next person that comes up to the spa is going to be met with less than hospitable attitudes. And so, you know, there has to be something we can do, at least as far as the Siskiyou County Library giving out passwords for wifi, being so accommodating to having them around there. You know, nobody's used the library in years and it's declining because of so many people hanging out around the steps of the library. There's, there's two guys in the front of it currently, asleep right now on the benches. So anyway, it's like to, you know, throw that into the massive amount of problems that you're having right now. But that seems like, you know, some sort of a, you know, a county facility that doesn't have to have that type of populace around it all the time. That's not a, you know, an encampment or, they don't need to be given internet privileges and all kinds of other things to, you know, provoke them to hang around out there during the day. So that's a raising concern, and today was an eye-opener for the next level, so. Anyway, thank you.
Alright, thanks, thank you.
I'm hoping the sheriff can help us with that. This is the county library, maybe the sheriff can help us with that, since it's a county library.
We had the, yeah, we had the, what is it, was it named, it was London Library, he was actually...
Michael, Michael.
I think that's a separate issue that we need to deal with. Yeah, I think we need to stay with homeless, and then we'll go to that after at the end.
Oh, absolutely.
Because it's also a cooling center right now for people to go. And it's the only one that we have. And, but I mean, it's, I think it's definitely an issue, but it's a separate issue from homeless right now.
Well, yes, yes and no. If we have a place for them to go, then maybe that would alleviate some of that action there. So, you know, based on what amounts to it, if there's someplace for them to go, then they wouldn't be hanging out as much, at least especially in nighttime.
I don't think unless you get them out, doesn't matter where they have to go, I think unless you kick them out, they're going to be there. I mean, they've been there when I was Principal of Jackson, that's, that's been 15 years. And they were over there at night, and they were, so I mean, it's, it's not new.
No.
But again, it's an issue, I'm just saying it's a separate issue that we need to deal with.
Well, like I said, we had a place from the evening time ago. Because during the day, you're going to run into that, that issue because the library is open. They were supposed, he was originally the librarian, there was, he was shutting down the internet during the nighttime. I don't know if he still is.
When they, when they're supposed to, when they leave at four o'clock, that was the request of the supervisor.
All of us, you and I were there on that one.
Right.
Well, and there are lots of places they can sit for internet. I mean, there's internet and my own business, we used to sit out front there at night. I'd be to go home and there'd be three or four cars of people, homeless, sitting out in front of my business. Because the parking lot holds about forty, forty cars, you know. So yeah, it's an issue, I'm not saying it's not.
We got some more public comment, come on up if you can, appreciate it. Just go ahead, you got your hand raised, yes?
Good evening, council members. My name is Cheryl Snook. I live at Crystal Glen Motorhome Park off of Deer Creek Way. First of all, thank you for your service to the city of Warricka, it's much appreciated. I don't know if this would qualify, but. One of the renters in Deer Creek, in Crystal Glen. Approached my home about a month and a half ago. And she related a story that. For the end of May, there was. She spotted a man. Around our property. And this was at one o'clock in the morning. And. She had let the dog out, obviously to relieve itself. And she knew there should not be anyone walking around the property. And it was in the back of the property and so she called the police. The police responded. And by then, I believe she had said that the man had moved on to behind the home. And moved on to our neighbor just up the road. And by the time the police were able to catch up with him, he was on this second road of the mobile home park. And she told me that he was arrested. And she did say that the police had come to our door to knock on the door, but obviously. My roommate and I were not awakened during this time. But you can see that we're very much concerned at what is going on. Now, I have lived here for three years in the mobile home park. And there have been homeless around, but for the most part, they've been very respectful, courteous. They pretty much have kept to themselves. Which is mainly groups that have moved in. Um. I'm just seeing things that. I don't know how to explain it, but it's leading me to become very uncomfortable in my little neck of the woods, selfishly. And. I would like something to be done, whether it increase police patrol. I know that's kind of difficult, even in a small town such as this. But something needs to be done. I mean, this is just getting too close to the home to where we no longer feel safe in our own homes. And we're going to have to see. Maybe security managers for the home. I never thought that would have happened. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When has it, thinking outside the box of it, has it ever been considered that the courthouse could be temporary orders for them while they're in the middle street?
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm really hard of hearing.
Can you come down? Can you come down to the microphone?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
People at home can't hear you either unless you're talking into the microphone.
Thank you.
I was just saying, thinking out of the box, thinking out of. Our encampment idea, which I know is what, where we're headed. We want to, want to do that. I want them to have that. But has it ever been considered? To relocate them to one of the vacant buildings in our town, thinking the courthouse, which is big. And I don't know what they sleep on at night, but I'm sure that the courthouse floor is probably just as good. There's bathrooms there. There's air conditioning. There's water. I realize trying to figure out how we're going to have the bonfire in there might be a drawback. But you know, if we could, if we could put them somewhere, you say that they're looking for a place to cool down. Yeah, of course they are. They're looking for a place to be. They're looking for, well, they're not looking for, I'm looking for them to have adequate restroom facilities. Um, and I just wonder, you know, if that's, that's something we could throw out there and say, let's do this right now. This is your designated place while we work on getting something else ready for you.
Thank you.
The courthouse is still being used for offices and business of the county, so that, that option is off the table.
Are we talking about the new courthouse or the old? I mean, they're both big. They moved more people into the old courthouse than they moved out the new, didn't they, Wayne? I think you guys are busted. And you're still, and you're using the basements and both floors. Yeah. But it is a good, it is a good idea.
We actually did look up.
That's okay. Oh, what about the juvenile hall? I understand that isn't being used.
I, you'd have to check probation lights to be out there, although the kids are now sent down to the county as far as I understand.
My understanding is the juvenile hall is being used by Sheriff's Department. And that's recently moved the kids down to House of Tahama. The Sheriff's Department took it over and they have been using it. For now, for probably, how long, how long the kid's been gone? Maybe two, three years we've been housing them? Yeah, it's, it's been, it's full.
It is full.
The Charlie Bird.
Do they, do they have any unfortunate, what about the yard that goes along with it? Although it does have the fencing and stuff, if the gates weren't locked or anything, is that an option?
Well, it's, the area, yeah, would be an option. It's not. See that yard in that area, looking at my head there.
It's got like a twelve foot fence, razor wire, barbed wire.
Yeah.
And you can only enter it from, uh.
One side.
You can come in, you come in, uh, down off the cell blocks and I mean, there may be a gate, but I don't, I.
There's got to be a gate there.
But a gate could be put in.
But they can only access to that would be from the, um, section of the greenway and to off of Raymond Street, the modern works mall wrapped back around.
Or Ringy Field in that area.
Yeah, I don't think.
Oh, I was talking about the Charlie Bird Center. I didn't even think about the old probation office.
The old probation office is full. We're talking about Charlie Bird.
Oh, okay.
It's totally full. It's the DRC now. It's a data reporting center.
Right.
For criminals that don't go, because of Prop forty-seven, we don't have, we have a lot of, uh, misdemeanors and so they don't go in, you know?
So the one on that facility is the one I was thinking about because. This is the crew tribe property, so it wouldn't be that locationized, so. Well, that's what I was trying to find out specifically.
Yeah, as far as I know, that's still.
Charlie Bird Center is in full use and has been since it gets to Tahama County, as Wayne said about two and a half, three years ago. It is fully, fully used. Because part of the, part of a. Concern from the county of Siskiyou is that we are boarding our kids down in Tahama County at the rate of whatever it is a day, two or $100 a day. And they would like to see that open back up.
So we did, oh, we did look, we were checking into the old Shop Smart building.
Shop Smart.
And as a building, uh, what other building were we looking at? I know we were looking at a couple of different buildings to possibly.
The one that Don Marie talked about that is, uh, the old wood drying rack.
Oh, yes.
Right.
What's that?
Thunderbird milk. Thunderbird.
Well, it's actually.
I don't think it's thunder. Thunderbird was that way.
Off the Sharps Road area.
Yeah.
I was just asking, are we going to close public comments?
No, we're still kind of, yeah, we're kind of. Go ahead.
We started talking about location size.
You mentioned the Shop Smart Building.
Correct.
Either it was just used as, as a cooling center during the day and there's some of that dynamic out of the library. Might be a positive move. In addition to that, with the, with the exception of the Siskiyou Fair. The fairgrounds has some large parking lots to the south of it, to the north of it, to the east of it. I mean, all these locations could possibly be used as some sort of temporary campsite.
We actually, we actually did look into that because now we're so close to there, that's obviously not an option now.
Two, three weeks away. Isn't rented out, I think. But that's, that's a good, yeah, and the arena would be good.
There's halls, there's unused buildings that have air conditioning.
Yeah, we, we, we did. We actually did check into that, yeah, with Cliff and stuff. And it's not a, unfortunately, hasn't been an option with them. So. I know, Arthur, we have somebody online that wants to make a public comment.
Oh, I see him.
Who has had identify themselves?
Hello, my name is Brett. Can you hear me?
Yes, uh-huh.
Who?
Brett.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, uh, calling in about the comment on the homeless situation, uh.
Duncan.
You know, you guys are kind of in a tough position. The whole city's in a tough position, you know? I empathize with the ladies that were up there talking earlier about being afraid. They have a reason to be afraid. Okay, I mean, uh, yeah, a large amount of alcoholism, narcotic addiction, mental illness. And everything else that come along with the homeless. It's not their choice. It's just illnesses that come along with them. The problem is, is I understand that the law requires for, in order for us to be able to remove them to someplace else, we have to provide them someplace else. Now, to my knowledge, that someplace else doesn't say we have to give them air-conditioned buildings or anything else. It just says that you have to find a new location. So my greatest fear is that in your haste to accommodate the few. Instead of please the masses in the city, you might be kind of looking to go a little overboard. You're, some of these locations that you're throwing out, you're talking about ruining completely excellent pieces of commercial real estate. Stick a homeless camp on. I think that everybody's smart enough to understand that the word government and temporary don't often go hand in hand. So when you are telling these people that this is a temporary encampment until you get the Butcher Hill place ready. I think that's misleading. The other thing is, is once you provide these people a place to live on anybody's private property, if they decide not to go. You could be looking to an eviction process that might take six months to a year to get them off there because now you've legally given them a place to go. So I think you guys need to think about this. If you're going to stick them someplace, it doesn't have to be someplace convenient. If you want to make it convenient, go get them in a bus and bring them to Walmart every day so they can do their shopping or whatever it is that they want to do. But let's not ruin a good piece of city just to accommodate this group of people. Okay, I mean, Portland, Seattle, I could go on and name the list, there's forever San Francisco. These people have ruined their cities by doing the kind of accommodation that you're attempting to do right now. So that's it. That's just my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you, Brett.
Unfortunately, that is obviously, it's obviously a good point on.
I don't want Asa to think we shut him down because part of the reason we're here, we've asked them to be here is in, in addition to complaints, which we're hearing tonight. We also want brainstorm.
Yeah.
We want the weirdest ideas, the best, there's no absolute bad idea. We have looked at a lot of places. We have, you know, and, 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 um. I think the point is, we got to think out of the box to find something temporary until we can have. A cleared property through the state of California EPA for our. Our current, the site that we want to provide for everyone. Also, we are not. We, I mean, I will say, we, if, if we have a hundred homeless camps, I'm just saying. I'd be surprised if forty move into property we have, but what it does mean is that at that point in time. They're going to have to find another place to go if they choose not to move there. And so, um, you know, that's, that's also part of it. But I, but we don't want to shoot you down, Asa, because, uh, or whoever sent the courthouse.
Right.
The government, I don't want to shoot that down. I mean, we got to, we got to think out of the box.
Yep.
We do. Maybe all of a sudden something clicked, I don't know, why, why, you know, takes, takes everybody out here to help us.
Yep. Getting back to Brett, you know, what he just discussed, you know? Out of, basically out of the area location and what he stated with having to bus them, two people need to realize that. If we do get them into one of our properties that's outside the, their convenience zone of where they can get to the services. Then we do, we would have to supply them some type of transportation because if we don't, then we get sued and it has happened. Numerous cities that they've gotten sued because they inconvenienced them in the aspect that they can't get to their services. So, yeah, it's a definite possibility. We do, we have actually briefly discussed that too. Because we do have a couple of locations that are out of Warrick City limits. Bussing situation would be a challenge because for one thing, getting somebody to do it and we do have, um, a bus.
Now, as you say, somebody on the panel though, on the council, I'm sorry, you mentioned that, like two or three meetings ago. So, I mean, it has come up.
No, no, we've definitely discussed it. It's another one. It's just like I said, the matter of convenience. Another thing would be, where does that convenience come? Does, do, are we in our legal rights if we have a, if we have a bus system? It would have to be a twenty-four hour bus system. If something comes up in the middle of the night that they need something done. Then we could be, they, if they can't call nine-one-one, then we're, how is our responsibility level on that too? So there's, there's definitely different levels on that responsibility level of how we could get sued on that too. So it's not outside the realm of thinking though, because it's definitely something that we should be thinking about. But how do, how does that look? How do we, how do we make that happen? You know, as a, as a council, we, I think we talked about there's a retired senior bus, I think we discussed, was, would be available. So that's definitely a possibility. We'd have to man it. We'd have to have somebody at that location. So in other words, if it's out of the city limits, we'd have to have somebody there manning that, that area twenty-four seven also.
The licensed class would be C.
Right.
C.
Yep.
Be playing a class C, I think, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
To be able to haul eleven of them.
Yep. B, yeah.
For fourteen or more. The bus like that senior center has, we cost you about thirty thousand dollars.
And knowing schools, we can't haul more than eleven and man on that bus trip.
Yeah. That's, that's not outside the realm of, you know, thinking though. It's, I mean, it's definitely, we, like I said, we're, we're looking at everything. It's just what's going to work and we're trying to figure that out. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, this is Jones Smith Freeman, uh, city council member. I don't know if you remember a number of years ago, I think Debbie probably remembers when we first came on the council. Former mayor David Simmons had come up with the idea, the, the busing idea, uh, to a farm. And then everyone would be given a duty, uh, to, you know, to live at the farm. Uh, nothing ever came of it. I just ran into him as a matter of fact. I just saw him recently. And he asked about what was going on. He said, his idea still stands about the farm and the bus. He didn't want to drive the bus though.
We actually discussed too, wouldn't, uh, having that out there at the county airport too.
Right.
Using some of the facility out there too.
They have nine hundred acres. They have nine hundred acres at the, uh, the county airport.
We actually discussed that at the homeless coalition.
I'm kind of thinking though that, uh, part of the draw are the services that are provided by the county. Plus the ability to panhandle. Which is illegal, but it's done anyway. We all know that. But, um, and just because we build. A facility for them doesn't mean they're all going to use it. And I don't think we're ever going to solve it, but I'd like to minimize it and that's more realistic. Result, I think. I'd like us all to feel safe. I understand the concerns of everyone here because. I'm in one of the lower incomes as well by the creek and it is a concern because I see them walking all times of day and night. I hear the arguments. I hear, I don't see the campfires, so, so I'm really lucky there. But I do hear and see them and I have concerns as well. And I lock my door now, which I never had to before.
Well, like I was telling you, they're obviously right in my backyard all the time. I live right there at Lower Green Horn Park. That's where they're at.
And your mom's right next door.
My mom and my mom's had individuals come in the middle of the night asking for water, asking a place to stay. So I know exactly what the individuals are saying about this. This is a problem that needs to be fixed right away because it's, it's not safe. We can't use our parks and don't feel safe to use our parks and can't even feel safe to be in our own homes. That becomes an issue. I grew, I grew up right there next to where I live now. I had never locked my door, never even owned a key to my house. Till about five years ago, so didn't need to. So it's, it's definitely. So, didn't need to. So it's, it's definitely a huge problem.
And I will concur with the four, I, I've said this before, I live up near Discovery Park, and we've had three, we've had three small cabins up there.
Yep.
So, it's not just, it's not just down here.
No.
You know, I get homeless walking by my house.
Our fire situation.
Yeah.
Exhaust and sleep. They're not sleeping up here.
Yeah. Well, and, and I think probably what needs to happen is those people need to be safe.
Well, I mean, they're, they're pretty sick about it. You know, they have, they, they want to become a government, they got the scanner, and they all stand around the barbecue pit.
If you, if they, if they put it out, a, a police officer's going to be, just like, they can feel a hood and tell whether the car was just driven.
They'll, they'll probably take out the water or anything. Yeah, I mean, it's obvious there's fire, both barbecue grills are not guarded up.
So let's, let's get back to this discussion, please. So, do we have, is it, is Matt or anybody have any, Chief Lemus or anybody have any more information they want to bring us? Or Chief Gilman? I didn't know if you guys had any more information to bring us. I wasn't sure where it was leading on everything, so. I know you guys, I know you've been very, very, very busy, so.
Here I am again.
Okay.
Okay, the fire situation. Crazy neighbors. But my son-in-law said that if those people are using that fire for some kind of religious service, sacred service, or to keep warm, nobody makes them put those fires out. Absolutely not. So I don't know what their purpose is or what their claim and purpose is. But that does, you know, that, that does present a problem. And they know, they know all the things that they can say, do, insist on, reject. They know that like the back of their hand. And one of our neighbors was in a parking lot, it's above the park, a bunch of them are moving to that, too. But this guy was pouring something out, and he says, "What are you doing?" And he says, "Oh, I'm pumping some gasoline for a friend." So, thank you for the accelerant for the fire that probably got me. Anyway, I just say, there are, there's even rules about a fire. There's no place down there to have a fire. There's no fire pits, there's no barbecues, nothing. So that means they're just doing it where they want to, and that is dry as a bone down.
Yes. I, I will concur with her because looking at the voidy decision, it does say, and that's you, and I've talked about it with the new camp, it does say that you will, we will provide a place for them to rest, and we will provide a place for them to stay warm, and that includes an open fire. I think on a ninety-five degree day, we could probably say, or a hundred-two degree day, or in an extreme fire, I think we could probably override that, couldn't we, Chief?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm going to address that, and thank you very much for bringing that up. If you folks, Deer Creek, Crystal Blaine, if you guys see people that have a fire, now, I mean, I'm going to have to look into the re- voidy decision thoroughly myself because I've challenged that, and my, I've got to protect you folks first and foremost. So, if I think it's something that needs to be put out, we're going to put it out. Don't worry about the consequences later. And that may be to my detriment someday, but in that situation, we will go down there and have a chat. So I was thinking, as you spoke earlier, to have, at some point, well, spare a minute, or any other police officers, go down and have a chat, and say, "Look, we're, you guys, you know, your cooking fire, we can show you how to, how to do it safely." However, what happens is, they fall asleep, they do things that, you know, make them fall asleep. They, they're not tending to it, and then wind comes up, boom, you've got a fire. So that's the reason why. If it was, everybody was, was responsible, they wouldn't have these issues to begin. Same as Doryard Burning. We've had escape burns all over the county that have turned into large fires for that same reason. So, cooking fires are allowed, and I'll, I'll get to the specifics. Ceremonial or spiritual fires are allowed, and burning fires in, in the, in the cold season, in the wintertime. I've allowed those. I've seen people that had, you know, rock, fire pits and everything dug out, and they're perfect under the bridges, they're not an issue. However, come fire season, which we've been in for, already for quite some time, more so than in previous years, that, you know, I've said, we put out every campfire that we found. A lot of times, we get called and they're already gone. So to your point, if they're going to put water on, on a, on a barbecue or something like that, we can do some education on that with them and say, "If you'd rather not have the city come down and pull those out, then this is what you need to do." I mean, it's, it's a touch, it's a touchy thing. But more, more important than that is the safety of the residents, and that's, that's my job is, unless, unless someone tells me differently. I'm going to continue that.
Absolutely.
I'm getting back to your questions on
Yes.
the Pembroke property, former Pine Mountain Mill. So the last meeting, I provided you with some things that Mandy needed to have to, to get back to you folks, and dates and timelines, the exact location. And then, as far as they would require a contract with the city. So I think those are some things we probably need to discuss with the city attorney prior to, you know, rendering any decision on that site. So, I think what's, I think is doable, but we just need to get back to her on those, on those items. So she can confer with her legal counsel and her, her bosses.
Okay. Do you, moving forward on that, do you want one of us, or do you want to talk to Dawn?
I can speak with Dawn and maybe have a conference call with her and, and get it all lined out as exactly what, you know, what we all agreed to as far as how to proceed, if they still want to proceed. Those are the items that she listed there for them, so.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't know, we're about to ask the council, but I still think that would be a real good option. We can get all of our ducks in a row to, to have that location now.
Yeah. You'll have to direct Dawn to speak with you.
Yeah, no, it's
Because he doesn't, yeah.
I'll call Dawn tomorrow.
Because of the protocol.
Yeah, everything behind us, where, like I say, Starbucks, Burger King, if you go up Campus Drive and where the road turns, if you look in the very back or the flat spot where the mill used to be, there was probably a good couple acres back there that could be good ones. That's, was just an option to, you know, temporarily.
Yeah. Just keep in mind, if we do that location, I just want to talk, talk about that. If we do, it becomes open, and we does something that's, something that's presented to Dawn, Dawn can figure out a way to make that legal, which would be, might be tricky, just like what, what Brett was discussing, too. That might be definitely a problem with removing them after the fact. There, we'd have to supply some type of cover for them, too, just keep that in mind, because that's an open area, open lot area.
It'd have to be fenced.
And we'd have to probably do, even do temporary fences possibly, at least on the one, couple corners. But we'd also have to do some type of cover, I'm sure, for them, too, because that's the reason why they're in some of these locations that's along the creek because of the, the trees and the shade that they have, and especially like Deer Creek, unfortunately, that's why they like it because there's a nice cool breeze that blows there, and, and it has a lot of shade, so it's frustrating. That's, we'd have to think about how we'd present that, too, but, yes.
So, and secondly, I didn't forget about your, the other part of your question was, the people that are non-ambulatory, the folks that can't get out on their own, most of them are going to need assistance, a lot. So in that Deer Creek and Crystal Blaine. Generally speaking, fire department, we go take care of the fire. Urban law enforcement will take care of evacuations. So we'll have to coordinate something with the manager and the community as a whole. We've done it with Oak Ridge Mobile Home Park, we need to update that one as well. So you guys will be included in the next update, just as soon as we can get that scheduled. I know Chief Gilman's extremely busy, and I am as well, but that's, that's something we can't wait on. So, thank you for bringing that up, because that's never been done at that.
How many of we contact you if we have fires?
Okay, yeah, make sure, just call 911, just like you would report a, you saw a house on fire. Don't, don't call a, a fire station because I may or may not be there. I get some nasty messages sometimes, like, "Why aren't you answering?" We're not there all the time. I'm the only one there more often than anybody else. And the staff or the volunteers don't answer the phones generally, because they get sales calls and everything. So, yeah, make sure you call 911 if you want to report a fire.
And Chief, do they just tell 911, "I'm on Deer Creek, I'm across from the homeless camp, and we have a fire there that looks like it's getting out of control," or what do they say?
Well, yeah, it's
What's, so that somebody will get a hold, so that Cal Fire, what is it?
Tell them you're, you're witnessing a fire down the creek. No, they'll dispatch us.
Okay.
Yeah, good. They might ask you other questions. Is there a lot of smoke, whatever? Just answer their questions, and they'll, they'll dispatch us pretty quick. And we've had quite a few at behavioral health, with Kim's ride, we've had them in Greenway, several, and a few other places.
You've had to respond to?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Not, it's not real frequent, but it seems to go in waves, and it more so when the weather cools off. Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, we'll be closing public comments now, so we can talk about locations.
We've got one, we've got one more. Maybe more. We think she's going to talk, maybe she's going to leave. Bye. Okay. She took her purse. I was wondering. Steve?
Steve Fisher and none of it, Deer Creek, and it's getting colder now. And it's just getting worse and worse and worse. I get homes before, I know how it works. And you got a lot of cheese stealing, manipulate, say, "Give more and more, you got to worry, patrol, you got to worry." And that, you know, that's what, that's what happens. And that's what they're doing. They're making their own communities, their own lies, laws, laws and lies, same thing. And, and it becomes a way of life for them, it becomes their own society, it becomes a, a way of living that becomes attractive to them because they don't have to pay anything to get there. You know, and, and they can keep on keeping on. But then they've got the other guys. The ones who can't afford to be themselves. And because of the bad guys, they've gotten one, have, take, so to give, they get a bad name, they get a bad call. There's a lot of people down there that need help and water. To get help, goes through all the bureaucratic bull, excuse my language if I say. It, it takes a, a month to two to three months to get into a place to live where you can manipulate, where you clean. Deer Creek's great because you can get water and get clean. Now, people don't like to be dirty. Most people, a lot of people do. Most people like to be clean, more than they want. I can think of a lot of little places downtown where you put things, but it, it all goes back to thinking people around it aren't going to want. You know, and that's the way it is. A lot of us people came from places like that for one reason or another, and we understand. A lot of people forget where they come from. And a lot of people got, they rush out.
No, thank you, Steve. That brings up a good point, that everybody needs to understand that these people, these are humans, they're just another human being, just like the rest of us, that may have, something may have happened, and they're falling on hard times. And the reason why we're, you know, trying to get a permanent location and hopefully be able to work with the Beacon of Hope, with their shelter there is to be able to give them a safe place to stay and hopefully connect them with some services to get them out of those situations. Get them off out of drug addiction, out of alcohol abuse, and, and some of the other situations that they go through. A lot of it's mental illness, just, you know, that's a huge issue here in Siskiyou County is mental illness. And what we see with drug addiction and alcoholism and stuff is some of the times the side effects of what's happened because of due to mental illness. So, thank you for bringing that up, because it's, you know, we need to be aware of that these are, you know, human beings. Some of these individuals have been locals here for, you know, they have local families, and they've lived here forever and just fell on hard times. So, they are people that we need to respect, just like another human being. Thank you.
And your third piece of that, Beacon of Hope, with, there's Dawn Langford up there and Steve Renner down here, from Beacon of Hope, through the camp ground and then the transitional housing, which the city and the county are working together on. I know that Dwayne's on a committee, and they are working very, very hard. They have a grant, I think, that, that we have the grant already, I believe.
Yeah.
But we're working on getting some transitional apartments built. Yeah. And, and rather put them in a motel. We, we have the money to build the apartments, we build the apartments.
There's a lot of people, if you give them a place to work, will work for.
Yeah, yes.
You know, good people, they want a place to sit. If you give them a place to work, if you can work in a, do a job and do something, if you have a chance. Then you got the other snowmills.
Yeah. You have to take one of the other.
One or two.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, do we have any other public comments? Close it for public comments and go into more further discussion.
Before you go further.
Yes, sir.
Can we, just as a council, let everybody know what's going on Saturday?
Yeah.
For those that want to, do you want to just share with that?
Absolutely.
Good idea.
So, this Saturday, over at our location at Bottom of Foot Hill, next to the Beacon of Hope Shelter that they, they've got enclosed, and hopefully do soon get it further along, especially if the public's help, we can bring some more awareness to that. But anyways, our chunk of property that we're doing the urban campsite on, we're going to have a cleanup day. So it's going to be from eight to noon or one o'clock, depending on the temperature, obviously. But at least we'll be there at eight o'clock. We're going to do a cleanup. Just a little, you know, moving of limbs, maybe a little cleanup of the grassy area, moving some clutter that's around there. Try to open the site up to where we can get a better visual of what direction we want to go with. We've, Paul and I have went out and kind of mapped it out and kind of got a, a little bit of a direction. I haven't actually worked up the map yet. I brought it with me, but I haven't got it presented to you guys yet. I will have it for Saturday, though. So anybody that wants to show up at the urban campsite or future urban campsite, we'll have a layout of, the general layout of how to present the urban campsite and how it's going to look with the, obviously with the council's permission, we'll move forward, and we'll, we'll be looking at different ideas of how to structure it, too. But anyways, we're going to be having a cleanup day out there, just, it's going to be casual. We just want to get things cleaned up and open it up to where we can see what we're working with. Right now, it's so overgrown and cluttered that we, it's hard to, to get a good visual of what we're working with, so. No, actually, we're going to try to supply everything, so.
Gloves.
Gloves, yes, you definitely want to bring some gloves, yes.
We'll have water. In the morning, we'll have coffee and, and some sweets at eight o'clock. And then we'll have a little bottle of water, so you can have whatever, you know. And then we, what we wanted to do is buy everybody a Subway sandwich or something, and we can, it's just going to, I know it's a hot day, but we do have trees, like beautiful tall trees.
Where is that?
Right, do you know where Blue Goose is?
Old Blue Goose.
Right next to Blue Goose. And on the other side is the old sheriff's trailer that they donated to Beacon of Hope. And Beacon of Hope has done a great job of splitting it. It doesn't look like a sheriff's trailer. Looks like it needs a large facility now. So it's right there.
By the old wrecking yard.
Old wrecking yard.
For the old type of
Next to the wrecking yard, yeah.
I'm sorry, Steve. Under the Blue Goose, because there are a lot of people that said they just, in the last three years, the old Blue Goose is a train station, so you drive. Yeah, you drive under Minor Street, and rather than get, go the wrong way on the freeway, you go just past the off-ramp and hang up, hang out, ride and come down, yeah.
You probably remember the old wrecking yard, Steve. Right, it's
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, it's just going to be, we've got Steve Renner here, has already cut out, he's, he's bucked a lot of the branches. Raise your hand, Steve.
I see, Steve. You're hiding behind the podium.
Steve is an unbelievable worker at Beacon of Hope. And he has, in his spare time, he goes next door and goes, "What can I do?" And he helps, you know, like Dwayne said, raking, mopping up a couple of blackberry bushes. Weed whacking, you're going to bring a weed whacker, right? I mean, if somebody had a weed whacker or something, if you have tools that you want to bring up your own just to do something specific, that's fine, too. Just make sure that you write your name on it, or you keep it, you know, with you. But gloves is a must.
Yeah, yeah, definitely want that. I protection, yes, Chief.
You had a lot of due faces here tonight, it looks like. I think it might be an appropriate time to remind them that Beacon of Hope is still looking for donations.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, daughter, Steve, would you like to step up to the podium?
P.O. Box 557, Dawn, I believe. P.O. Box 557.
Yes.
And can I tell you that if you do come out, we are going to have you sign a release in case you were to get hurt, you'll have to. So, you know, if you don't want to do that, I understand, but you wouldn't be able to work, you know.
Volunteers, yeah, we have to do that with all volunteers. Hi, Dawn.
Thank you, Dawn. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No problem, no problem, but you're used to it. Councilman McCoy, he correctly recited the P.O. Box. And Michelle O'Gorman at the, Michelle O'Gorman at the local resource center continues to be the best point of contact for, for personally getting ahold of people to make donations and deliver to her. All our board members. All our board members can accept donations and we'll be happy to do so. And in that regard, we have another board member here this evening. I'll have her raise her hand real quickly. Pat Kaye.
Sorry, Pat. I looked down. I apologize.
She's a wonderful member of our board. And I think you're gonna see some of our board members and volunteers for Beacon of Hope out there this Saturday. Steve's our coordinator on that. And so we're looking forward to joining you on Saturday. It's scheduled, it's forecasted to be triple digits. If we have a large crew, you can get after it vigorously. First couple of hours, that'd be a better way to go.
Take a lot of water.
Once again, all of us for Beacon of Hope, thank you all very much for all that you're doing to work with us and coordinate. I think things are moving in a good direction, although sometimes not as quickly as we would like. But certainly, it seems to me that there's a picture emerging here of what might be a potential course of action that would work. And we do appreciate any community support whatsoever that you might offer us. The nature of volunteering hours and time or cash donations, anything, of course, is very, very helpful, so. And Dawn and Pat, you're still looking, you probably need about $175,000 more. Is that it?
Oh, I think that's a good estimate.
And you'll, and you'll take one-time donations or if they want to donate monthly, five, 10, 15, 20, $100, you'll do that too? Absolutely. Any, any of those alternatives are entirely acceptable to us. And we will work with anybody who's interested in giving. We will work with them to come up with ways to make it work.
Or even better, one big lump sum.
Large round figures work really, really well, too. And Pat, your board has done this all without paying anybody to come in and do things so far. You guys, haven't you, you guys have done a miraculous job of getting people, you know, to donate and then donate their time. Oh, you can, you can come in when, when, when you guys are, when like Steve right there, where he's hanging Steve. He kind of runs the crew, but I mean, like if somebody wants to come in and when we're painting, wants to paint, we love it. We had somebody come over at one point in time that couldn't, when I first started working last year, that she said, I'm not comfortable doing what you guys are doing. She said, can I go out and, and rake the lot? And she was raking up nails and stuff. You know, it was great. No. Not yet, not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
There will be a point in time where we do. And we do have fill the truck events each winter at the beginning of each shelter season where we are asking for those items.
Okay.
All right, I'm sorry. Thank you.
No, no, it needed to be.
I just wanted to get it out so people were leaving. They would know.
That's gonna be a good, hopefully a good turnout and get some.
We'd love to.
Clear it up a little bit and get a good visual. All right, let's go into councilman's statements. We have some direction on anything. Obviously, we want to see, one good one would be the High Mountain Mill Site there. That's a good one. And you, Chief Gelman, you haven't heard more from Poppy up there in the casino. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. So the spot up there, I contacted them again day before yesterday to follow up on that. He hasn't got it completely through his board, but basically said it's been shot down. So that area is gonna be done. They really wanted to help. They were very supportive. They had talked for.
Okay.
Well, thank you. And do we have any contracts or rental agreement or anything like that on Mill Creek? What more do we have? We're supposed to have some more on Mill Creek property tonight? Okay, has everybody had a chance to go through it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we want to discuss that more.
Yes, could we discuss that? I noticed that in the contract, it requires a 30 days notice.
Correct.
And I did talk to our attorney about it. He said as long as someone, no one is living on the premises, they don't require 60 days, only 30 days.
Correct.
If they're living on the premises, they'd be in violation of city code.
Well, that's true.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, this individual that rents this property from the city has accumulated a few things there. So a 30-day notice probably wouldn't be a necessarily feasible thing. Just so you guys know, he has wood logs there and other stuff there. So it might not be as easy for him to vacate the premises as easy as we think.
Well, and, I'm sorry.
Oh, Dawn, our city attorney.
For that reason. My advice is that although this is supposedly a commercial lease and it says it's 30 days notice, a person could claim to be, to have thrown a sleeping bag in there and that it's a residential occupancy. So I think the conservative thing to do, rather than set someone up with the defense or a chance to go to court by giving a 30-day notice is if you decide to select that property, let's give them a 60-day notice, be conservative about it, and then we will eliminate the possibilities of a court challenge.
So Dawn, if they, if they've got a sleeping bag in there, that's interesting because, I mean, you can basically, you can basically sleep in your business anywhere in my region, I guess, huh? I mean, the ordinance, yeah, the ordinance, that wouldn't really mean a thing, right? It wouldn't have any teeth in it.
Right. It shouldn't be done. But it does, what I'm saying is that they probably wouldn't win. But it gives them an opportunity to contest our notice and bring it, and then we'd have to ring an eviction action. And the delay would be such that it would just be more prudent and conservative to give them a 60-day notice and eliminate that issue entirely.
So we are, we know that it's gonna go longer. Matt, have you sent us the email, the council yet that you got from Alex? You were gonna do that after the last meeting?
I haven't seen.
Okay.
No, I haven't.
Because I haven't seen, okay, because we're gonna need that. Here's the deal. It's gonna be 60 days. We're looking at, I mean, we're hoping to get into November, depending on, because I've been calling Alex and I don't, I haven't been able to hold her up. Keep calling. But the dilemma is, if we're gonna use that, we're not even gonna use the shop. So perhaps we could do, we could do a 60-day, but with the stipend, with the stipulation that we are, we're only gonna use the back part.
I don't think we can break, I have to ask Dawn, but I don't think we can break it down. It's, he's leasing the whole property. And then I'm sure he's a truck driver. I'm sure he has a lot of equipment and stuff inside the shop.
Well, the shop's very, very small. As I said, it's less than 1,000 square feet.
Yeah, no, it's not very big.
So I don't think he has anything more than probably a logging truck in there. I know that I'm, I was at the credit union today. We're just, we have the adjacent property to it. And it's, I mean, I know there's a lot of stuff there, but it's not necessarily.
I guess I need to rephrase, not necessarily equipment, but I'm sure a lot of tools, valuable tools, because most, most truck drivers have a very elaborate set of tools.
But if it becomes our only feasible, then I think we need to, we need to consider it seriously.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, let me just address that. With every lease is a covenant of quiet enjoyment of the whole of the property. And if we, I had a case once where the landlords had an order from the fire department to trim the bushes and they went to the property without giving 24 hours notice and set up some lawn chairs on the property and the judge ruled against them for not, for disturbing their quiet enjoyment of the property.
Well, we're not gonna do anything within 24 hours. But, I mean, Dawn, anybody can sue. All you gotta do is find an attorney that will take the case. That's what, that's what, that's what I learned in my short law school, my short semester in law school, is that as long as you got an attorney, they'll take the case. And that's why we have such a litigious society in the United States. But, I mean, so I just think we need to consider it if it becomes the number one.
Yes.
Because we're working with a lot of time restrictions on all of these properties. I hate to see us go through all of this when we might have the potential to have the property ready for us in the same amount of time. So can we have an updated report from Matt regarding where the process is? And after it's approved to start working on the property, how long it will take from beginning to end to clear it? In which case, we might be doing all of this and that might be the fastest route is where I'm going. So just a report. Is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I would like to see that direction the rest of council would do. So, yes, we could get something in a timely fashion. That would be great, Mr. Milton.
Yeah, I agree with that. We're talking about the timber deal property by Starbucks time. She meets with her board members. They meet with their attorneys. We meet with our attorney. I dropped an agreement. We're talking about 45 to 60 days probably on that realistically. Then my concern is if we go to a private property, that they own a private property, and we don't tell them to leave and they say, oh, no, it's private, and then they have to go through a whole eviction process. It's different when it's.
Just like Brett brought up.
Yeah, so I have concerns now. But that, I think it's gonna take longer than.
And I'm sure the property owners will probably, they'll bring their lawyers into that situation. Their lawyers are probably gonna bring that up right away.
I don't think any of this is a reason to stop the process. We have to continue this process in earnest, in good faith.
Yes.
Yeah, because we have a lot of homeless persons and we need to figure out right now, how to deal with it right now. So instead of December, or we know we want to do in, in, in either December, January, or November, when that property becomes available, we need to figure out.
So can I get the permission with the rest of council to have direction for the city to move forward on eviction of the Mill Street property?
Not eviction.
Huh?
Not eviction.
Well.
Notice the vacant.
Notice the vacant. I'm sorry, you're correct. Notice.
He's the professional, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so does that mean we've narrowed it down to one property? Because.
Not necessarily.
We haven't.
He would look into it, you're saying.
To look into, okay. Because we haven't discussed the old ShopSmart location. And I was still kind of waiting for Matt to give a report.
I know.
Oh, Matt.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
ShopSmart's not interested in Scott Hodgson from ShopSmart. He's not interested in, in using it for homeless. Scott Hodgson is interested in selling it. Matter of fact, he's gonna spend about a quarter million dollars for a new roof in the next, probably the next 90 days. He's gotta put a new roof on it, so.
Why would you need a new roof for a building that has a hole in it?
It doesn't have a hole in it.
That's what I've heard.
Maybe a hole in the roof.
What's that? Yeah, I think we, I think we've marked it off the list last time, yeah, because he'd said no, but.
Well, that's why I wasn't aware that we finished discussing hospital locations.
I guess what I'm getting at is, we still, getting back to what you're saying, basically, yes. I would like to just still move forward on the Mill Street that, whatever avenue can come forth or faster would be great. But this is a property that I think the future could be, help us with some other situations too.
Yes.
In any regards, we need to have a proper.
I think so. I guess that's what I'm saying, yeah.
I understand. But Matt, do you have a report for us tonight?
I did not have one prepared this evening.
Yes, please.
That takes good.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the update remains the same as the previous meeting when I spoke to the email from Alex McBride. I just sent you all that, that email that Councilman McCoy asked for. So you should see that come on here any minute. So we're still at the original timeline of the paperwork. Speaking with staff this morning, paperwork's still on track. They're fervently working on keeping that on track. So we're still late July. Nicole provided the removal docs for the county review the end of July or early August. It would be post RFP with a 10-day minimum, early to mid-August, award the contract in a kickoff meeting. Mid-August to the first week of September would be mobilization, fieldwork, cleanup, lab testing, removal of stockpiles. So we're looking to be, if we're on track, if nothing gets sideways, mid-August to the first week of September, working the ground. Mid-September, you've got a final cleanup report to get through. Late September, the county reviews that report and then it goes to the Department of Toxic Substances Control for their 30-day review, which means best-case scenario, and I said this at the previous meeting, the Clean Bill of Health, early, or end of October, early November. So that's the same report I gave at a previous meeting, but we're on track.
Field testing, what field testing are they gonna do? You're saying it's in late August, early September?
We went through the phase one and the phase two.
Yeah.
So we know what's in the dirt.
Yes.
And then they need to get in there and get that out.
Okay, but you said field testing in late August, early September. What field testing would that be? That's what you just mentioned.
Right. So you've got the mobilization, the fieldwork, cleanup and lab testing.
So they're gonna dig it out, then field test.
You gotta dig it out and make sure that everything's clean.
So they're gonna field test it before they dig it out? Because you've got field testing coming in September, but probably not digging till September.
We have a recommendation of the depth to remove. So the contractors come in and remove that depth. And then the remaining soil needs to be tested to ensure the cleanup work.
Okay, I just, I got what you gave me was not in that order. Field, you had field testing going on first. It's already been field tested twice. How many inches are they saying we need to go?
I believe the report speaks to six inches to a foot. There's, and six inches of soil assumed from one area, a foot of soil in another area. So you're looking at 275 tons and then another 112 tons from the two areas that were, that were tested.
So on this, on this timeline, obviously, things can be thrown into a glitch on that. My, my thing is, is there any way that we can semi-line up the person to, that would be responsible for moving this dirt to where we have them secured for some type of timeline to where we don't get to that point? And then all of a sudden, we're like, oh, no, we can't find anybody for another six months to do this.
Right. So as this timeline states, end of July, if we are going into August, we would be posting an RFP at a 10-day minimum. So that's about as short as we like to go on request for proposals, because it gives the local contractors, hopefully, some time, enough time to respond. Now, we are talking hazmat removal.
Right.
So a lot of local contractors don't have that. The city crews don't have that anymore since we sold the dump. So.
Mr. Mayor.
It's not a large job, you know, it's six inches to a foot of dirt to remove. It's just paperwork to get us there.
Yes, my understanding, after talking to street contractors, is there's nobody in county that has a hazmat removal. So they'll be coming out of Redding, Bedford, Sacramento, and then they will be hauling probably south of Sacramento for two or three hours. So it's, you know, even, even at six to 12 inches, it's, you know, it's gonna take a company that has some trucks, too. That's, that's what I've been told by our local excavators.
Makes sense. Okay, great. Thank you, Matt.
I have one.
Oh, sorry.
Sir?
Yes.
Okay, so in the meantime, because everyone is really concerned about fire mitigation, how are the permits going? Because maybe at this point, we need to do some fire mitigation at Deer Creek.
Yes.
If at all possible, because if we can't correct things the way we'd like to, maybe we need to protect from the other angle is what I'm saying. So how are the permits going?
The 1600 permit is in process. Our E Corps, our environmental consultant, has been working away at it. We expect a draft on that to come back to us in the next week or so and send it on to Fish and Water.
Okay.
Their review, it'll be, this will be the draft that we send with payment, which fires off their 30-day review for Fish and Water.
Good. So I've got 1600 permit though, too. How much area, so speaking of Deer Creek area, I know it's in the creek area, but how, how much can we mitigate? How much of that area can we do some fire mitigation of that? Because, I mean, obviously, it's in the creek area, but if we're far enough away, can we do some of that even? Do some of the fire mitigation?
The annual permit speaks to the reaches of the creek that we typically maintain. If there's anything beyond what is the norm, then it needs to be spoken to directly within that permit. So if it's along the waterway. So if it's along the waterway of Waireka Creek, um, it's mentioned within that.
So I guess my question is, I understand what you're saying, but what is that? I mean, cuz Deer Creek obviously is more than just a school. Narrow white waterway, are we talking in a flood year that extends all the way up next to the road? I mean, how much area can we go in there and do some fire mitigation right now in in the area not next to the creek?
We cut our standard forty foot in any any parcel in the city that's over an acre. Um, we work with Willow at the beginning of the season and we send out the letters letting everybody know that you need to cut that. So if it's an acre or more, um, we do what we make citizens do and we cut that forty foot buffer around the outside of it. The Deer Creek site specifically was planted and irrigated to grow the grasses and the willows that are there. So we have not cut more than the forty foot buffer off of the perimeter, which is required by code. We get the same letter from Willow that the citizens get in public works. We try to beat her to the punch every year.
So can we get there? And then we're still going back to the question, can we do some fire mitigation in that area? I realize you said there's some grasses and stuff. They're all dried up, so it's sure it's you can mow them down. It's not they're gonna come back next year. So it's not a matter of if they're gonna grow back, they'll grow back. Um, so can we do some fire mitigation?
Yes, it's city property. We can mow city property.
Okay. And what would that entail? Is that something that could be done in a timely fashion?
And doesn't require part of the sixteen hundred permit?
No, it's outside the city. It's outside of that. If that's if I'm understanding the question, we would be in a park mowing areas of the park that aren't grass, which obviously, working with Chief Lemus, the time of day would have to be right, the, you know, all of that. Conditions have to be right for us to put any anything out there, so we would not cause the fire that concerns us. That can be a project that we worked up for you.
What else are you doing at six AM?
Yeah.
He's kinda guy that mows.
Uh, Chief Lemus, is that's a feasible thing to work with city staff on trying to arrange something down there?
We need to do that.
Yeah, and I guess this would also require our other chief and code enforcement. Um, is this a feasible thing? I know you're so shorthanded right now. Is that something that could be achieved on your end too to help, obviously, with the uh I said the uh homeless individuals down there cuz we'd have to um direct them in one end or the other. That's the other thing we gotta look at, so.
Like like what happened at CLA on the hill?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so cool.
Okay.
I will relay to the maintenance division that there's a coming project to work with.
Is is this the rest of councils wishes to want to get this this area cleared?
Yes.
That would be our recommendation, but let's ask our city manager, interim city manager Randy, is this the appropriate way to do this? Or do we have to bring it back for a vote?
We're given direction.
No, you're you're just giving you're just giving city manager directions, so there's no need for a vote. I mean, we're all agreeing.
Please not ask that.
Oh, okay.
No, I mean, there's staff of the city manager that's been asked questions that weren't asked of the city manager so he could or the chief or whatever could prepare these things. So we've gone around the organizational process repeatedly and repeatedly tonight. So at the moment, I'm not sure why I'm here. So the question is, the question is, if you want to give direction for us to clean up our property, just suggest that. I'm sure between Matt and I, we could follow up on that.
Cool.
And Chief, don't don't. Is that the consensus of everyone?
Sounds good, yes.
Well, you're saying, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I'd like, I'm still a little unclear on my direction. Am I giving a thirty or a sixty day notice to vacate?
So I I guess that's with the rest of council, we, yeah.
He's not. We're we're handing it over to Randy to direct Dawn. That's what you did.
I I don't direct Dawn, you do.
We direct Dawn on that.
But you're talking about the lease now?
Correct. On West Street.
The only thing on the agenda tonight was a discussion of the lease and the answer to the questions we understood you asked before. And again, I wasn't at previous meetings.
Right.
Not really sure.
Well, yes, I. Discussion possible action, not just discussion.
So I did talk with Dawn. We gave you the information. So, yes, if you want to give direction, but again, this is, to me, it was supposed to be like a study session. My recommendation, if you were going to terminate this lease, is you put it on your next regular city council meeting. You don't have to.
And and if it's.
Do what you wanna do.
If it's for homeless, why why would we do that? If it was a homeless issue, why would we put on a regular meeting rather than do it here?
Because it's regular business.
What do you what's what is your input on this, Dawn?
Well, uh, normally, all of this would have been discussed in closed uh session under uh real property negotiations and poss- potential litigation, but since since you've discussed it in open session, um I I am willing uh to take whatever direction uh the council wants. And I just needed, just need to know, do I prepare a thirty day notice or a sixty day notice?
May may I ask a question? So of the city manager, you made that you made the comment to us as a council then that this is um an informational, meaning only, you know, kind of thing. And and you said you thought it was a study session. Okay, this is not typically for us a study session. This is not how our council works. This is an action session. We've come to these council meetings because when Dwayne and I were working on things and we're meeting with law enforcement and meeting with Public Works and meeting with Fire, uh, three members on council felt left out. And so we went ahead, Dwayne and I did, to include it. We weren't making any decisions. We were just, we were just exploring things to bring back to the council. Okay, mind you, so for us, I'm gonna speak, I've obviously seen these, so once we started these, these are working um, decision-making. We don't put something off for another two or three weeks.
Right.
If we can get done today, I mean, that's that's part of the death knell of government, you know?
Well, I I guess I would like to go back to what this was on our agenda. Uh, number two, discussion possible action, receive and file information, including current lease and existing facilities on City Park fifteen hundred Mill Street, Waireka. So there is a obviously a little gray area on that, I guess, in the aspect.
No, I think you're absolutely correct. If you want to at this moment in time make a motion to direct direct uh, staff out of the city of town to proceed with terminating the lease, please make that motion.
And I, if there are most or I make that, I'll make that motion.
So, okay, so let 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 me be clear.
Yes.
We're making a motion to give Dawn direction. Because you're not gonna give direction to the city manager, which is what we've done in the past, and then the city manager deals with the city attorney. Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, this now.
Hang on, hang on, I'm asking, wait.
This situation, I think Dawn is looking for direction from us. Dawn works directly with us and to us. And obviously, we go to the city manager, but he's he is our employee.
I understand, but in my three years of being on the council, Mayor Freeman or Mayor Kay would direct
Yes.
The the main city manager and then the city, cuz the city manager wanted to make sure that the city manager was in the loop, I'm sure. We don't want we don't wanna leave you out of the loop. And then the city manager would then speak with Dawn and then come back when when Mayor Freeman at the time would, you know, would meet with them or you would be with them. So I don't care how we do it. I just wanna do it say every time. I don't wanna keep changing back and forth.
If I may.
Yes, please.
The process you're suggesting is absolutely the correct one that I would hope you would make, direct the city manager to do it. The city manager will then incorporate the attorney in the process to make sure the process is legal.
Perfect.
Right.
So I'll I will, I guess, going getting back to it, I would like to make a motion to direct Randy Johnson, city manager, to work with.
Okay, and the whole time I've been on council, six and a half, it's plus years over, we've never voted in workshop.
This isn't a workshop.
This is actually has discussion possible action.
It's a special meeting.
Okay, it's a special meeting. I'm good. Go ahead. Do you?
I'd like to make the motion to direct for Andy Johnson, our city manager, to work with our city attorney to um to how do I say this? Um, push.
To proceed.
Proceed on.
Terminating the lease.
Yes.
Thank you.
Don't don't make it too complicated. Keep it simple for me.
I'll second the motion or discussion.
All right, point of order.
But we need to, I'm sorry to.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
That that would be a sixty day notice. Is this correct with the rest of the council?
In working with the city attorney, I'm sure he'll convince me of that.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. Oh, Dawn is raising his hand.
I I just forgot to put it down after I.
Okay.
I think Paul has his hand down.
Is there something we need to add?
Yeah, point of order. I'm just looking. I'm looking through Rosenberg right now. We, this is something we need to vote on? For you to give direction to, uh, we've never voted before for the mayor to give direction.
This is a discussion matters. So that's that was what Debbie was asking too.
Yes, we never voted before.
This, in a sense, is not a, this is technically not a workshop. This is actually a special meeting.
It's a meeting, yeah. It's a meeting, yeah.
So I'm like, I have that if I may. This is actually the beginning of the initiation of litigation. And the city council, when it sues them, does have to affirmatively vote to initiate litigation. So if you're if if you're giving a motion to give a notice of intent to vacate, yes, it should be by motion.
Yeah, so now we have a motion to second. I'm going to do roll call.
Can we list the motion again? Just say it. What's the motion?
Motion, what was the last word you get? I'm sorry.
To direct the city manager to work with the city attorney to initiate the process of terminating the lease.
There we go, on Mill Street.
On Mill Street, fifteen hundred Mill Street.
With Bill Hall, okay.
Correct, okay. We already had motion second. Uh, I, is this still? Paul McCoy?
Aye.
Ford Milton?
Aye.
Debbie Barrett?
Aye.
Wayne Kay, aye, okay. Direction, this is good. I think.
I understand.
Oh, good. It's a forward motion on a location.
Okay, so now, let's moving forward. I'll still have a little bit more discussion, not gonna stop here. This is just a motion on that part. Uh, I guess the other part of this is, like we talked discussed before, do we still wanna move forward on any other things that may came up? Come up like um the uh Mill property, Timberfield Mill property. If that's something comes up, we can move forward on that.
Absolutely.
We need to address that.
I would.
Yeah.
Depending on, you know, the cost and the legality.
Bring back information if that goes to that point.
And we would direct staff to look into it, correct?
If if, I'm sorry.
No, go forward.
Sure, to the mayor. Um, if you have specific questions, specific actions, or anything that you need staff to do, ask.
Okay.
You need to present it and please ask for the consensus of the council. So there isn't, you know, the next meeting, why did you work on that? If all five of you agree, great.
Right.
Thank you.
But, yeah. We used up significant other staff time tonight.
Yes.
And they had great answers to your questions, but they might not have been prepared.
Exactly.
To answer those questions. So we'd like to be prepared, make it easier for them.
Right, that's no, that's very fair. Should be to be that way so we don't put people on the spot, so.
But truthfully, we don't always know what direction the conversation, what discussion's gonna go. So I I absolutely support asking for information prior to a meeting if I know what I want.
And that's, again, I would tell you, the other part of the city manager's job is to help you figure that out.
Yep.
Not make you stressed out of it, but, you know, we've been doing this for a while, so.
Couple days.
The manager can help you with that.
Mr. McCoy, yes.
I was just saying, perhaps uh you should direct the city manager to have somebody from Public Works on at each of these meetings to give us an update on that property. Because I know, I know, if, you know, like I communicate with Alex about every three or four weeks when I can find her. And that we like it, Matt or Ben or somebody's, you know, they can tag team and come in and talk about it. And it's the same thing with like fire. She's like the sixteen hundred permit and and making sure where that is on track because fire is an issue for homeless.
Yes, man.
And I would just say the other part of that is, if you know ahead of time that you have that question, if you come in and see me, we can have Matt or whoever come in, we can discuss it, and we can really prepare the answer that you need to have.
Yes, I think.
I'm just saying, by having somebody at a meeting and all of a sudden the question pops into your mind and you ask them, they may or not be ready.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's.
Well, we just had, we had, I had not, I mostly, I had not seen the email yet, and he had said he would send it out to us at the last meeting. And so we had not seen it, so we didn't have, that's why I think we all were asking.
You asked, you asked me at Tuesday's meeting to follow up on the sixteen hundred stuff.
Right.
Which I did, and then email was prepared today, drafted by Cindy, and he is putting in final form. So I think that's the the way, because it was asked again.
Well, this doesn't have anything to do with sixteen hundred.
No.
What had, yeah, that has nothing to do with the other, so.
So, yeah, that's. I would I would like.
Neither here nor there.
With the council's permission too, I would like to on every one of these homeless meetings and probably our city, regular city meetings, to be updated on that sixteen hundred status.
Yes.
Um, even if we haven't heard, still would like to know what's going on.
And that is a reasonable request. If we have a list of the properties
Yep.
That you need that for.
Well, sixteen hundred is not for a list of property.
It's all property.
It's all properties, so we just need to.
Yeah, it was a permit that we, yeah, we requested for quite a while, so.
Yeah, and we've discussed it with you before. Yeah, we did a previous meeting. That's the one we talked about that's been about three years. So we're, we've been out.
We've anyways, we're just like.
Yeah.
That would be one we definitely want.
I think we discussed that with you at the last.
An update on that, so, okay.
We're getting there, right, Cindy?
We discussed a lot of stuff with him.
Yes.
I understand that, I understand that, but.
Yeah.
And some of it has to be.
We don't wanna give.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a lot that you'd have to be brought up to speed on. We apologize if we fall apart again.
Gotta figure it out.
After you make the direction, one thing, we've lost our audience, but we have a list of the questions they ask, I think we need to address.
I think.
Even if it's gonna be on, if they can watch it on TV or whatever.
Yeah, no, you're right. I think we've got, I know.
Once you're, I didn't mean to interrupt you while you're directing him on the uh.
I think we had, oh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think that we addressed a lot of the questions.
Back through right now.
Do we have a plan for ingress and egress?
Evacuation.
That's a hard way to get out of the way during a fire. No, we don't, but Jerry talked about, to Robin, about how it would happen. Uh, Tryce has asked, um, he said, there's no ideal location. Tonight's meeting is to find a temporary site. Um, I I, what I would really love to see, in addition to getting this feedback, is I'd like to see feedback that says, hey, what about? What about? What about? You know, like, we got good feedback from Asa Bennett, and we got good feedback from this lady right here, yeah, you know, which was great. Um, will there be a uh structure built on the temporary site? No, there isn't. We didn't, we didn't answer that. There will be no structure built on the temporary site.
Right.
Do we have a better place than Lower Green Horn? Is that the best?
Do you know for sure that there's no structure gonna be done, built on the temporary site? That whole thing may change in the process of doing all this.
This is very true.
As of right now, there is no intention.
Exactly.
The city council will put a structure on the site.
Exactly, no, exactly, at this point, yes, very good.
No, there, I mean, no, cuz like a bathroom, build a bathroom, there's gonna be probably a quarter million dollars. Temporary carports and.
Yeah, that's.
We invent the wheel. We're looking, we've looked at other camps.
Well, that's why Randy said, as of right now, there's no structure.
I'm just answering her honestly.
Yep.
You know, uh, do we have a better place than Lower Green Horn? I think, I think we do. You four may not think so. You may think Lower Green Horn is the best place to house them, and if that's the case, I would have to, I would have to just go along with it.
Well, and and, you know, just to speak of that, it's it's gets used by the soccer people all the time and stuff like that. It's it's another place that would be very challenging to to set up there too, because of the amount of public use.
And then this one is for the chief. Uh, the fifth wheels are moving closer, and the trailers are moving closer to their dwellings. And then this one is for the chief, uh, the fifth wheels are moving closer, and the trailers are moving closer to their dwellings, uh, on, on, uh, Deer Creek. Uh, and, and it frightens him, it's very, very frightening for them, so, uh, and then, um, it's, so, can they, if they're not moved, how long can they park them on a street before, uh, we can ask them to do it, is it seventy-two hours?
So it depends on what the parking situation is typically yesterday, it depends on the block, or I raise the red zones. So to answer her question, if we are working on it, Bill works on it, there are a lot of options, but up to seventy-two hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the trailers, thank you, and then, um, she, I, I didn't get this, she said that they're driving through the apartments, I, maybe you guys in the park, I didn't know that she meant they're driving up and down Deer Creek? Or they're driving actually through the Deer Creek apartments?
So they're referred to them driving through, they can manage that with gates, we can access.
People can't hear you, and neither can our attorney, oh, and he's the only one on the line.
I was trying to say.
Welcome back. This is one that I don't know.
He's got, he's got to finish.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
So the area is set up like a horseshoe, and people are driving through, it is private property, so we can't force that with prowling, bordering, uh, whatever crimes are. So to answer the question, yes, if she calls the police, just like the mail that we arrested at the door, we can help. They can also take measures as far as putting up aids, whatever they want, so they can self, you know, protect.
Yeah, and that was, Chief, I'm sorry, and that was Crystal Glenn, she's not my right.
Crystal Glenn and.
I, I think you're talking about Crystal Glenn more, but I think Deer Creek people do go through it.
Right, right.
One entrance and the second one, it's a self-contained, and the first one has a horseshoe.
Yep.
Right.
All the same.
What they do in the first one though is they go up, and then they come out the dirt road.
Correct, it's all.
This one, Matt would know, or you're gonna know, because you've been working with the Siskiure Parks and Garden Club, Matt answered about the vegetation, the forty feet. Um, because Dale said, oh, we're gonna come, we'll come and help pull, and that's wonderful, but can we just pull stuff out of there, or do we have to be careful about what we?
We do, there's a lot of, there's a lot of sensitive vegetation there, the, the Siskiure Parks and Greenway, uh, put in there specifically native plants to that, that area, and they would like to retain those. So there is definitely some, that Matt's gonna have to work with, with them while I'm doing that, so it's not as cut and dry, and I'm sorry to make it sound so cut and dry, that, yeah. There is some dynamic, certain dynamics that he, they're gonna have to do, because there is some sensitive habitat there that, vegetation, I should say, that is in that area.
I thought, I was under that impression.
Yeah, no, it's definitely, we've, we've had this discussion with.
Yes, and they are going to be at the workshop later on, uh, for that hazard reduction, I did get a response from them. And, uh, Jerry Moser and I have had multiple discussions about that, because I did tell him my concern was that as much work as they put into developing these areas, it, uh, tends to be more, just as much as a, a fire hazard as everything else that's there, and that concerned me. So he's aware of my opinion, I don't speak for anyone else, uh, but I personally think that mowing it down during high-risk fire seasons is a responsible act on the city's part to minimize the, uh, risk of fire, and I hope they would understand that. And just mowing it, shortening it is going to, uh, still retain, uh, the integrity of the plant, and it'll come back. And I'm not trying to undo what they've done, I just want to make sure that people are safe as much as we can.
Well, the, the grasses and stuff, uh, obviously, like, it's like I stated, those can be mowed down, because they will go back. Some of the, some of the plant life they planted, if it's mowed down too, too low, won't come back, but it's just that, they're, you know, it has to be worked with hand in hand with, with those guys. A lot of the stuff that they do have in that, in that area that we're trying to, uh, I'm so sorry, to, we're trying to, uh, mitigate fire mitigation is beyond the creek area, is more of the grasslands.
So you're suggesting that contact?
On top of it, correct, yeah.
I'm happy.
Yes, Randy.
Suggest to the city manager, yes, suggest that.
Yes.
Um, no, I was just gonna point out, we've gone to a couple of the property, they've taken me to a couple of properties, and what we're doing is taking the fire chief along, and we're asking him what in fact is a fire hazard issue.
Right.
And if he's not confirming what we think might be a fire hazard issue, we're not taking it out.
Right.
Some of this stuff, when we get back to city property, we don't necessarily need to do that, we could do what the city wants to do. But we're certainly now, now I'm aware that there are some sensitive plants there, so they were, and Matt is probably already aware of that.
Yeah, well, they, when they constructed the Greenway, they, they had actually a list of plant life, uh, vegetation that was planted there. I'm pretty sure they had a list of, of pretty much the locations and stuff, didn't they, Matt? Yeah, that's, I thought they did.
Yes, well, and I think what Council, Councilwoman Baird has pointed out very expertly, is that, I mean, like, we're, we're, we're looking at homeless issue, but then all of a sudden, we have the fire issue, and then we wanna maybe take some plants out, but we can't, we can't take them down, it's, we're negotiating.
Yeah.
And I don't think everybody, I mean, I, I, she sees it, right, and I think we all see it, but I don't think everybody sees that, that one thing sets another off, that sets another off, and you have to, you have to work around wall.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and, and the other thing, the fire chief and Matt and the police chief are all aware of it, some of this, is some of these plants are screening for the people who are now living there. And some of that, you just don't want to take out, because it's, makes it more difficult, uh, for the situation. On the other hand, you know, if you don't want us to be sensitive to that.
I, I think the fire risk should be higher priority than someone feeling uncomfortable.
Some of these people live the way they live, and putting some screening there, so people going by or living nearby don't see them, is perceived to be a good idea. So, keep that in mind, yeah, I, I, I understand exactly what you're saying.
Let's get back to questions, please.
Well, one of them was, one of them was the statement, dogs without leashes, and perhaps that is just something that, that our new animal control, when they get here, will take on, you know? And then ETA, when will we find a new area to put them? Right now, we can't say exactly. They, she asked twice about an ETA, and we can't, we can say that we're, we're working on it. But again, you know, with, with Matt doing everything he's doing, and the state says, hey, you know, we want you to do more, he has no control of that, and we don't either, so. Um, can we pick up trash, how do we do it?
We definitely.
That came from Asa, so that was probably centered around the county library, I don't know, can we put a, can we go in and tell them we're giving them bags, so they can pick up their trash? Okay, thank you. It, it is concerning to me that people are walking into the spas and things like that, and, and it is concerning that, uh, that, that there's an allegation of selling drugs at the library, that, that's very concerning to me. But again, I know that when I was principal of Jackson Street, which was oh-so-many years ago, all kind of stuff went on. And on every day after school, when I went, when I was principal of AP, I walked around it, uh, once or twice at the end of school to make sure the kids weren't hanging there, because it wasn't the greatest place to hang. Um, what can the city do to disperse the individuals from the library? All right, council, I'm asking you.
Isn't that county property?
It is.
Before what we had done with Jonah and I were earlier before you guys, uh, we actually had, uh, city staff had a discussion with the, uh, library.
Library director.
Yeah. Regarding turning off the wifi.
And they supposedly did it.
But they do kind of have a soft heart over there.
Yeah, they do. They always have.
Dwight, excuse me. Okay, and Councilmember Jonesman Freeman, Dwayne, actually, Mayor Keg, and I met with, um, then supervisor Lisa Nixon, and the librarian, and the sheriff, and our police chief at the time, at the librarian, with the librarian, and that, at that time, he, he hadn't turned it off before, the wifi. At that time, he got direction, uh, and he did start turning it off. When they leave the library, which I think is at four o'clock now, I think they have abbreviated hours over there, well, anyway. Uh, that, because he, his point was, it's a public building, and he felt that he owed it to the public, and Supervisor Nixon let him know that, uh, the supervisors really didn't want him giving away wifi in hours where there was no staff there, so.
So, yes, man.
I, I just, I, I, I don't want to interrupt.
No, it's okay.
No idea what you're talking about to start off with, other than it's the library building, and there's people gathering, and the answer is, yeah, the police are undoubtedly aware of this, and they patrol, and they do the best they can to keep those crowds moving, and they'll continue to do that.
Right.
Flip side of that is, I would tell you, you're fifty percent manpower in the, uh, the police, but your police chief is here, and it's hearing, plus I'll reiterate, or I'll restate it for him to make that a priority. Beyond that, you really have no.
Right.
City role in doing this, you're just trying to make properties, everybody's property, in the city safe.
Going, going back to what that, you know, that is public property, and we do not have a place for them to go, getting back to the old rule.
Maybe Chief could deputize, deputize City Manager Johnson, and he can walk next door, you know, four or five times a day, when he wants to get exercise.
No, that's, that's a possibility.
So is that a no?
Probably a no.
Consideration.
Yeah, but I do have a question on that, getting back to the library. The library is the Siskiure County Public Library, and it is controlled by the county, and therefore, the sheriff is an elected official of the county. So, uh, if, with your permission, I'd like to ask our police chief, and I, again, oh, okay, our city manager, what can we do to get the county, the sheriff, whoever at the county, to control their building better?
Well, it's not the building, it's the people.
Okay, the people.
And that's.
But it's their building and their property.
And I'm sure the chief is gonna tell you, he talks with them, and we continue to ask for their assistance, and that's, that's what you can do.
Yeah.
That's where we're at.
I know you talked to the sheriff today.
I did.
In the parking lot.
For like an hour. So we do what we can, we have always dealt, for thirty years, I've been, we've always dealt with this problem. There's a power outlet right over here, where people charge their phones, and after hours, they sit by the water, or the heater, in the wintertime, to get warm, they sleep back in that cubby. We've always worked very closely with the sheriff, we do control it, after hours, we can get it for probably, during the daytime, we go for them to be there. And the sheriff or I, that's where we do public property, they can be there unless someone calls us and says they're disrupting something.
Same, you know, same things I said after hours, and it goes back to, even after hours is a challenge, because it's county, it's a public building, it's county, whether it be one government or the other government, it's still a challenge unless they have a place to go.
I can come in and find people and I lay on our stuff.
Oh, yeah, here.
So it's, you know, it's gonna happen.
But, but do you remember, thank you, Chief, do you remember that there was somebody over in Scott Valley whose son was homeless in Hawaii, so she couldn't help him, so she would call down to the pizza place and have pizza delivered.
Delivered over there.
To the library at night.
I remember that.
For the homeless people.
I do remember that. Okay, so, so, let's, let's get back on course, so, because we need to wrap this up.
This was, this was, uh, from Cheryl at Crystal Glenn, and she talked about the arrests that they made and went into that, and it sounds like, from what our chief told us, that we have increased patrols there, so. And I know, because I've ridden with them two or three times on graveyards, and I know we go in and out of hotels and apartment buildings, and, I mean, and they call it in, and they write, you guys write it down on a sheet. I know that, because I've seen the sheet, um, could we put them in a courthouse, um, you know, I thought that our county assessor, uh, I mean, excuse me. Excuse me, I thought we had a tax collector, remain very, very calm, uh, I was gonna say, could we use your office, however.
You have a nicer condition.
And you want to retire, sir?
And the bathroom right across the hall.
It, it, but it actually was a good, it's stinky, it's a good idea, that was stinking out of the box.
Exactly.
Because the average person doesn't know that we're still using it, using it, yeah, so I thought it was, that was a good idea.
Yes, it was.
And Wayne was kind of just easygoing there. Um.
It's not my building, I just work it.
I think Brett is right on us when he says, um, be afraid.
Yes.
To let somebody get in and then, uh, you know, exercise their right. So, and I know you know it, and, you know, I've learned a lot from my dad, when he was a real estate broker, people get this, uh, you know, they, they, they would start using somebody else's property, and all of a sudden, two years later, it became their property. Let's see, you, you, okay, Deer Creek, it's getting worse, um, Steve was interesting. You heard him say he's been homeless.
Yes.
Randy, who sat up there, who got Steve to come, was also, he has also been homeless, yeah, so, you know, he said, they're, they're making their own community, I thought that was important for us to hear. Um, and then we got a great report from Matt, thank you, Matt, appreciate that, I'm sorry, I was putting you on the spot there, but thank you very much. Um, and then I just wanted to leave with something, because the word transient came up with at least one or two people, and, and the word homeless. And we, as a council, need to remember that they are different, transient by nature is lasting only a short time. Homeless by nature, a different de- definition means you lack a stable and appropriate housing situation, they are definitely different. My dad was transient prior to World War Two, he used to ride the rails from LA to, uh, southeastern Oregon to Joseph and Pendleton, and he'd work on the cattle ranches and move around, when he was like fifteen, sixteen in the summer, and then he'd ride the rail back to his mom's house in LA, that's a transient. My dad was a transient, and he said, I loved it, loved the lifestyle.
How many of the kids nowadays are transients?
I remember that, when I had a friend tell me to come on vacation, and I said, where are you staying at? He said, oh, no, I, I, I become a transient, I'm gonna stay at hostels.
Oh, what?
I didn't know what a hostel was.
Oh, you didn't know.
At that time, I'm all. You had a shelter, you had a shelter in life.
And I'm all, I go, what? Oh, yeah, there's this place that opened up, and I, I'm a transient for about a month, and I go to Hawaii, and I made a great place.
They love it.
It's real popular.
Why?
Yeah.
It's very popular in the thirty generation, of which you wouldn't know, you're under forty.
Well, I'm a Virgo, and I like to know where I'm going.
Yeah.
I like to say, I'm gonna go find a place, and they, you have a place for me to sleep at a hostel.
Younger gen, younger generation, that's real popular.
Yeah.
It is.
Those are the only questions that I, that I had, and I thought they were good questions, I thought they all were, and, you know, I, I'd still like to hear, I'd love to hear more people saying, hey, have you thought about putting them in the old car wash or the new car wash, I mean, anything.
Okay, so moving on, is there, do we have any other council comments, or are there any other comments we want to look at, um, those, or future, or are we?
We didn't get a reply from Willow, do you think we're on track here, do you have anything to add?
If your name is Willow, you can.
Good evening, Councilwoman, Randy, I haven't had the pleasure yet, so, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
In regards to Deer Creek. I go out on the regular, I was actually out there yesterday and today, um, as I'm helping train our current, and new ACO. The trailers get tagged, one of them's gonna get towed tomorrow. When cars are illegally parked, they're tagged and/or enforced to move at that immediate moment if they're occupied. I have yet to have a dog call saying that somebody is off-leash, I go down, every dog is on leash. So I can encourage, if anybody is watching that is now at home that wasn't here prior, if you see animals off-leash, you need to call, I'm not there, I don't know. In regards to other areas lower Green Horn, I actually was talking to Chief about that today. There are better spots, unfortunately, right now, that's where everybody's at, so, um, for your guys' tough decision, I don't envy you, but unfortunately, the decision needs to get made, because those areas are gonna continue to get worse.
Guaranteed.
Um, I will continue doing my job, making contact with them, I will continue to enforce what I can, I will continue to encourage them to clean up their spaces, tow cars and trailers where it's needed, I'll continue to do my job. As far as spaces to go, um, personally, and I will give my two cents on the Mill Street, having cross petroleum and the Campora propane site, I don't think that's a good spot, if you're talking about potential fires, putting it in line with two giant fuel stations. That's my two cents on that location, anything else that you guys need from me, please direct as necessary, and I'll do whatever I can.
Then, I'm gonna ask you, looking at Crystal Ball.
Yes, sir.
If, if, again, if we have fifty, we have fifty camps in the city, on, on, on city property, and we open a campground tomorrow that has two toilets, washing. that has two toilets, washing station, uh, um, well, they can be, they can be empty more than once a week. They can be empty like two or three times. A garbage scowl, an area for their dogs to, to go poo. Um, the locks at night, you know, the locks at a given time and unlocks in the morning again. How many of those fifty camps are actually, when we move them off of public property and we, we say, hey, we got a place for you, this is where it is? How many are really going to go? Because we're not going to get fifty moving there. I know that.
I would say probably a third.
Okay.
Realistically.
Okay, so.
And then when you look at that, those two, when you're looking at your permanent space, you're looking at other places that you're going to have them go. Like, uh, I don't remember what his name, Steve, was that his name? Um, he was sitting there talking about their own communities. I can't explain to you how valid that is. They have, the reason why they are segregated the way that they are is because they don't want to associate with this, that and the other. So they create their own communities.
That's what you pointed out to me when we were doing the plot and Mercy talked about that.
So when you're looking at moving these individuals and you don't have adequate space for them to be able to move into their zones, the likelihood of them moving to that space unfortunately is going to even be lower.
Pleasant, we comment on that, this, on our, our site, that was one of the things I suggested to Paul was basically on our current applied plot, we have two different sections so they, so they can be separated. Makes it easier for that separation.
Two different fire pits.
Yep.
So they have their own. And then one of the homeless, another homeless person suggested to me that, because this is what happens, goes on in Medford, that's not why, suggested that PD that, that they fill, that we have something filled out, which uh, Steve and Judge Langford and I are going to go up to look again at the robe retreat, but that PD can, uh, checks them out. And that's who is up there. PD's the only one that can put you in the homeless camp. And that's because, and what, what this homeless person said, then we get the viol- felons out of there. And he, and, and they don't allow any drugs up there either or alcohol. So if, you know, they don't go look into your camp homeless. So the other thing they don't allow Willow is you've got like a ten by ten or eleven by eleven and you can't bring a bunch, you can have what's in there.
Yes, and the other thing to remember about the robe retreat, that's not publicly owned.
Exactly.
That's the biggest piece of that.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
So if they can require no drugs, they can require no alcohol, they, they can have this laundry list of items because they are not publicly owned and operated. Um, and so another piece in talking to you, you're talking about the number of porta potties. If you're looking at a potential site of three acres and hopes to move fifty-five camps in there, you're going to look at two to five porta potties per twenty people. So if you're trying to get that large amount of people in there, they're going to be regularly cleaned. You're going to have a number of them. You're going to have, you're going to have, like, your, your supplies for the, for these camps or for this camp site, I unfortunately think is going to be grossly understated in that regard.
Well, I'm talking about that camp down there, the, 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 the permanent one. No, they have seven for a hundred tenants of it. Robe Retreat, seven porta potties. So, yeah. Go ahead, Randy. I hear you.
Okay, any other questions for Willow?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Keep up the good work.
Any other questions, comments? Because we need to wrap it up because I know, uh, people need to get home and I know some people have munchkins that they gotta go pick up.
City manager wants.
Yes, please. I'm sorry, Randy.
Just pay attention for a moment. Just getting back to the agenda. So the first item, right, can we just agree that you handled that before we even got there? Discussing all the previous sites that have been discussed?
Yes.
Okay. And the item two, directing that we proceed with terminating that. The other item, uh, I put on your agenda, or your dais, was just provocative to me today as I was trying to talk about some of these things. And basically by your zoning code, by your general plan, uh, your plan. M one is your only zoning. So I'm not sure you were aware of that until I was bringing.
I, I am. I don't know.
I think you all, honestly.
Well, okay, so basically you have city property, some of which is zone M one. Others may not be.
Right.
They're not eligible by your code, by your law.
Correct.
Doesn't mean you can't change the law.
Correct. That's why our permanent location is that way. That's why we distinctly place it that way.
But if the council decided you wanted to pursue doing that, that's like a general plan amendment or a zoning code amendment. And that's months and months and months and expensive. So you probably need to seriously consider rolling that out. Even though this is a significant issue, you may want to spend significant staff time and money on it to do that. Was it, you're right.
Can you tell me to which property you're referring to that we would have to spend significant time on? I, I guess you've lost me a little bit. On, on the M one zoning and you're saying that what we're looking at would take a significant amount of time.
Well, no, I'm not of the ones you were looking at. I'm not.
He's not, yeah. In general.
It was my understanding we were supposed to look at all city-owned property. A lot of city-owned property is not M one, correct? And I just brought this back to say, we're not going to look at other than M one.
Right.
To make it.
Well, we have looked at lots of city property. I mean, it's just been going on for, for about
I, I'm just.
Maybe since November, we've been meeting, I think, November.
I'm just getting my.
Anyways, cool. All right. Thank you. Any other comments?
Uh, just one. Uh, we did at one point discuss the area where what is that horse therapy group? They rented, they asked permission, they didn't rent. They asked permission to rent a parcel.
Stable hands.
Stable hands, yeah.
Stable hands.
Yeah, above Greenhorn and.
We gave them permission.
Yes, we did, of course, but they haven't come back again. I think they did it two years, but they haven't come back. And I just want to reiterate that if, I don't think that's an M one though.
Well, we have a piece of property that's in the county.
That's a.
That is, that belongs to us, but stable hands, when I've seen them, they're always, uh, they pull their trailers and you know where the two lock cabins are? They pull their trailers just into the dirt area there, get the horses out and they kind of ride and ride around in that dirty area. I've never seen them go in any farther, uh, when I've been there.
They've had porta potties up in, gosh, I wish I knew the name of the area. Do you know where I'm talking about?
I don't. Yes, I'm going to Greenhorn.
It goes by.
Yeah, it's about a mile and a half. It's a gravel lot. They do use it. I ride my bikes there.
Yeah.
Stable hands serve quite a bit. There's a porta potty there and there's a road, a gravel road, parallel to Greenhorn Road, takes you all the way back into the park.
Yep.
Yeah, so you're no idea. It's about a mile and a half.
But that's got to be the county.
That is a recount.
It's in the county. And Matt talked to us about that probably two or three meeting, uh, you know, of these meetings ago. Um, and, and I think as a council, we advised against it just because it was
Get too far out.
It was too far out and they're going to keep walking through the park and up there. But it, it, it is a good piece of progress.
It, I don't think it's as the worst idea.
Right.
I'm hoping these others come through, but I, I hate to exhaust every option.
Well, I think that's what we're still trying to leave those options open for sure. So any more comments? It's not, we need to adjourn this because it's getting late.
Eight fifty, almost nine.
What do you want staff to bring back at your next?
Yes, we need to have.
Pizza.
That was really good. Direction wise, I guess, you know, give us updates. I, I could talk to them at sixteen hundred and our permanent, our permanent uh, location to make sure if there's any new uh, progress on that. Um, we would have any progress on, in conjunction to um, the Hemuthy property, the old mill site, if there's any, any other words to dawn on that. That would be, if there's any updates on that, uh, update on what happened on Deer Creek and that area. If it gets, if it gets uh, fire mitigation and cleanup going on there, that's, we're talking the next meeting. It's going to be in August fifth, correct?
Yes, first, first Tuesday.
Yep.
Every property you've been considering, you're still considering. And we need to update you with.
Any updates that we have presented.
Any of those properties, including we'll go back and make sure of the zoning and general plan land use consideration.
Fine. Perfect. And obviously what we discussed tonight with the Mill Street property on that, obviously, so.
I guess we're only discussing too, the, the park, like dead, the Debbie Brown of now and the Mill Street, the only two state properties we're discussing.
Yeah, on that.
Yeah, but the park is an M one.
And the park is a city anyway. It's, it's in the county, yeah.
Well, part of the park.
Well, it's in the county. But if you had a park that you wanted to consider for this, if you look at some of that stuff in there, your city property can be exempted from this for an emergency shelter. And if you want to call it an emergency shelter, it's a new ballgame.
Temporary, would we call it a temporary emergency shelter?
Emergency shelters by definition are temporary. They may not be other than temporary. I think it's a six-month limitation.
Six month, okay.
That's right. Thank you.
That's a good idea.
So any other direction we have for the staff?
I think that's all. Thank you.
Yes, we need to adjourn.